Your God, invisibility, and justice for all.
Beautiful. Good job, Carl. Okay, heading on over to item A2. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Madam Mayor, roll call for the special meeting of the Reno City Council. Brekis is absent at this time. Dewar absent at this time. Delgado.
Here.
Weber. Jordan absent at this time. Reese.
Here.
And Shevy.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council noting for the record, Councilmember Dewar has joined us.
Perfect.
That, Madam Mayor, transitioning to... And looks like Councilmember Brekis is also with us now.
Okay, great. All right. So we'll head over to public comment, item A3.
Yes, Madam Mayor, public comment reserved for this item is for general public comment for items not on our agenda today. It should be noted for the record, we do not have any general public comment. And returning it back to you for approval of the agenda, as there's only one item on the agenda today, looking to the manager, but I do not believe he has any changes to make. He does not. With that, Madam Mayor, send it back to you, looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion. Aye, aye, aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
All right, Madam Mayor, transitioning on to your item today, which is continuation of the budget workshop. I will turn it over to the manager to set the ground rules and what we're going to cover today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We have three presentations lined up for you today. We're going to start with the city attorney's office, and we'll have a presentation on the risk fund and current litigation. We'll then transition to a presentation by the clerk regarding records and records management. And we'll finish off our day with Director Venus, and we'll talk about the CRM that we're proposing in this next year's budget. So with that, City Attorney Hall, take it away. You. Mr. Hall, you're on mute.
Right, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. Thank you. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
All right. So this is the 2122 proposed budget. You'll see that the risk premiums, that's money is contributed by all the different departments to fund the risk fund. And it earns about $80,000 in interest. We recovered approximately $1 million in insurance recovery. Part of that was a fire truck and also some claims on Kathy Woods. Finance intends on contributing $3 million to the risk fund to fund some of the expenses that we've recently incurred. You'll notice down here in the total revenue on claims and payments, that number is $5 million. That's an estimate. It's not the actual, the actual claims for 2021 were $4,378,000. And majority of that was the $3 million for Kathy Woods. And then a check issued on the Lemon Valley case, approximately $1.2 million. Going into the services that the risk team provides, one other thing I wanted to mention on this slide. When you look at salaries and benefits, you have $532,000 there. That pays salaries for Michael Payne, Christine Felts, admin support, Jonathan Shipman, myself, and Mark Hughes. The services that we provide, we're the first point of contact for risk-related issues from citizens and for city departments. We track all the claims and related costs and generate lost runs in the Risk Division software. Advise city council and the city manager of all anticipated litigation, track and pursue recoveries for damage to city property. Work with fleet to preserve accident evidence, purchase insurance, review policies, prepare renewal submissions. Make a liaison for insurance claims and notify appropriate department when claims are received involving defective property. So you'll see in fiscal year 1920, we had a total payout of approximately $604,000. Of note, in that number is $300,000 went to the McKissick lawsuit. And then switching over to fiscal year 2021, the majority of claims there is the $1 million on the Lemon Valley payout. Again, the major claims were Kathy Woods and Lemon Valley. The million two that you see there will be returned if council approves a settlement for $4.5 million that is on your agenda for tomorrow. One other thing I would note is that Judge Breslow also entered an order for attorney's fees in the amount of $1.3 million. So for those three claims, you're looking at $2.5 million. And the $4.5 million settlement would include the 27 cases in federal court in addition to the three cases pending in district court. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Is there discussion? And let's use raising our hands, our digital hand, if you would. And if the clerk will make sure that I can see those people that are raising their hands as well. So starting off, let's go with you, Councilwoman Dewar.
Yeah, thank you. I haven't quite grabbed my digital hand this morning.
Okay.
But I got my real hand right here. Just a quick question, just so I understand, the last thing you said, Carl, was about this 4.5 million. But you also mentioned this 1.3 million. Is that additive or is that a part of the 4.5?
So when Judge Breslow entered an order requiring that we submit a check for payment for damages, that was the 1.2.
Right.
He also entered an order for attorney's fees. However, when we appealed to the Supreme Court, we didn't have to submit that check. So we'll get that check back, the 1.2 million.
Right.
In the event we settle that case.
Right, but I'm talking about, is the 1.3, is that the 1.2 you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about 1.2 is damages, 1.3 is attorney's fees.
Right. So what I've asked, my question is, do we add the 1.3 to the 4.5?
No.
I asked if it's a part of the 4.5.
Right. So the 4.5 is a global settlement encompassing everything.
Okay. I just wanted clarity on that. And then there was one other thing. Gosh, off your slide, I was going to ask you about, I was a little unclear when you said this certain amount of money was for these salaries for five people approximately, like yourself and Jonathan and some admin stuff. Where does the rest of your salaries come out of?
General fund.
So this was just a snapshot of a non-general fund, or was that in an earlier slide that I might have just missed?
So the risk fund is a separate fund.
Okay.
And so salaries come out of that, and so.
Well, do we, do we get to see your general fund budget? Because I assume that includes your services, your supplies, your attorneys, even some estimates of maybe outside counsel, maybe expert witness fees or whatever. Could you share something about that?
Yes. So most of our expert witness fees and the cost of litigation are in the risk fund. That comes out of the risk fund.
Okay.
The bulk of my budget, general budget, comes out of the general fund. So that is my 29-person staff is covered by the general fund for the most part. But half of our salaries, for example, half of my salary, half of Mark Hughes' salary comes out of the risk fund.
So do we get to see your general fund budget? That's my question.
I don't have that in front of me, but I think it's part of the overall budget package that has been submitted to you. And I believe that that is somewhere in the realm of $4 or $5 million, something like that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Councilwoman Brekis. Yeah, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Hall. So have we had the risk fund audited in any recent time since we brought back our audit function?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. You know, my question is for the manager. It was, you know, I was really happy the council hired a risk manager. And that person is not within your chain of command. It's within the city manager's chain of command. And I think that person was hired this last budget year. And I just want to ask our manager if he views a scenario where the risk fund lives outside of the city attorney's office. Because to my knowledge, the risk fund did live outside of the city attorney's office prior to the cutbacks around 2010, 2011. It was its own separate function, living in the city manager's office. And I just want to know if our city manager's vision is to go back that way. Because to me, risk management is not so much about litigation, it's about getting not to litigation. And I've always thought when you have the attorneys over it, it reorients that other way. So, Mr. Manager, are you on this call?
I'm here.
What's your thinking?
Well, my thinking is that traditionally, a risk manager position deals primarily in the realms of insurance and reinsurance, particularly with respect to work comp claims and things of that nature. And that's what Mr. Payne is focusing on right now.
We have lost him.
Can you not hear me?
Now.
Okay. So Mr. Payne is focusing on work comp and insurance-related management functions at the moment. Certainly, you know, where the risk fund lives is a thing that, you know, probably does bear an ongoing discussion. But I think, you know, the observation coming out of a lot of these workshops is that we are a medium-sized city. And with a medium-sized, being a medium-sized city, there is going to be a near constant litigation load. And so perhaps the idea of having the auditor take a look at how the risk fund is being managed is appropriate. But I think we do need to prepare for and give our team the tools that are necessary to, you know, sustain that. Like I said, it will be a near constant litigation load.
Yeah, I get that. So let me ask as a follow-up, and I appreciate that, you know, looking at it at some point, you know, how it works best for our organization. But I want to ask about, you know, we're setting the budget right now. It shows we're tapping into this fund for setting this budget. But within that, any expenditure, and I just, I'm looking for confirmation, above $50,000 out of the risk fund comes to the council, correct? Because that's the resolution that's in place. Is that understood? I mean, is that, is that in agreement with the city attorney who's independent and with the city manager?
Yes, it is my understanding of the world in which we live, yes.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. Next up will be Councilmember Reese.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I just wanted to sort of piggyback on to Councilmember Dewar's inquiry. It looks like the proposed 2022 budget, and Mr. Hall, correct me if I'm wrong, you have been able to essentially keep your proposed budget flat. I mean, it's 0.4% increase over the prior fiscal year because you have reduced services and supplies by nearly $287,000 in the proposed budget. So I appreciate the effort. I mean, it's a belt tightening that helps the city overall. So it looks like the proposed budget that comes out of our general fund is, and Ms. Lochner, I'm sure is listening, could correct me if I'm wrong, is $4.845 million. So you were right, Mr. Hall, about that number. And I'm just looking at the materials that are provided in the Budget Workshop book. It's the summary that's provided. And at the end of the day, I just think it's good to note that, you know, you're keeping the budget flat for this fiscal year. There's a lot of ask throughout the city, but you figured out a way to keep it flat. So I appreciate that.
If I may, just chime in while I have just a moment, I'd like to thank my team. I think I have an excellent legal team here. My staff, I'd also like to thank Vicki Van Buren and Matt Taylor for helping me prepare this slideshow. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, Mr. Hall, I'll echo that, yes, in fact, you do have an outstanding legal team. I've had the privilege of, with almost everyone on the team, I think, at this point. And, you know, there's not a day that goes by that I'm not amazed by some memo that they've produced or some work product. It's not an easy job that your department heads up. And so I thank all of the members, your team and your staff, for the excellent work that they're doing. Many of the cases are very complicated, some of them stretching over many years. But we seem to, you know, be taking a good approach in terms of balancing the needs that our city has. And so I thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you for those words.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else? I don't see any other hands raised. Thank you, Mr. Hall, and to your staff as well.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. All right. Thank you, everybody.
Back to you, Mr. Manager.
Presentation today is going to be given by the city clerk. She's going to be talking about records management and some of the proposals we've made in this budget to digitize some records. I'm sure she'll have answers to other burning or pressing questions related to public records management that you might have as well.
Great.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. For the record, Ashley, Attorney, City Clerk. Here to talk to you today, there is a proposed budget submittal of request for $30,000 as a one-time payment for records digitization. As a reminder to Council, the city clerk's office supports three departmental core services. We support council support, as you are aware, all of your meetings, contracts, agreements, laws that change. Central cashiering also runs through our office as well as records management. Discussion today is on our status of records. As Council is aware, with contingency funds that this council approved, we launched the OnBase platform. This is a centralized electronic document management software. Effectively, the goal is to get all of the city's records into this city-based platform. This is not a clerk platform. This is a citywide platform. Additionally, we have just recently launched our public records search portal. This is something that will be a really valuable tool to the public as they'll have options to search tens of thousands of documents available for themselves to be able to access sooner. The goal here is in efforts of transparency and also reducing the amount of data that staff has to pull in order to turn around records faster to the public. As an upcoming thing, we are working with the Community Development Department as well as Fire and other departments for Acela integration to reduce the amount of duplicative records that are in the system and efforts from staff. And ultimately, our goal is to become a paperless environment as far as what is legally possible. To give Council an idea of storage, we currently have over 5,000 banker's boxes and an off-site storage. These are hard copy only that have not been digitized. This is a dramatic reduction in records prior to the pandemic as our office has been focusing on digitizing and leveraging this time. We have over 10 million images that are in hard copy only, and we do not have digital storage. Additionally, we have 5 million images on microfiche and film. To give you an idea, additionally, records management, we have been destroying records in accordance with the state retention schedule as was adopted by Council a few years back. The cost for this goes beyond actual reduction of physical records and electronic records. There is an actual cost to destroy boxes. We've also been hard at work on policy management and training throughout the organization. For digitization efforts, we have partnered with UNR. They are actually digitizing all of our historical journals. These go back from the inception of the city's incorporation date, all the way through the mid-'80s, actually. And there are ongoing efforts from staff for scanning, indexing, and then removal of duplicative or partial records. Many of our images that are in microfiche have now been destroyed based off of the wear and tear and time available for the fish. Additionally, those started with a 25-year retention on them based off of what the film actually could provide. And we have a lot of those images that are over 50 years old now that we're trying to get digitized. We do have an outside vendor that can digitize all of our paper. That only will cost us $1.3 million from Council. As Council is aware, deferred maintenance hit everything throughout the organization, including our records through the downturn. And we have been slowly working to come out of that. And this Council has put a real initiative on transparency and giving additional monies whenever they can each year for digitization. The current budget recommendation from the Council, excuse me, from the manager's office is $30,000. This will digitize 145 boxes of our over 5,000, or approximately 217,000 images. We only have about 15 million to go. To give Council an idea of our records, these are the historic journals. You'll note that these are from May 8, 1905. These are in the original leather-bound journals that are oversized that UNR is currently digitizing. These will eventually be available to the public for them to be able to search these historical records, to be able to pull up information that they're seeking for their purposes. And with that, that is all I have for a brief presentation on records today. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I see Councilman Reese's. Please, go ahead.
Well, and Madam Clerk, are we talking only about records? Or are we talking about the city clerk's budget in general? I'm just a little confused. If someone helped direct my traffic.
I can, I can jump in and help there. I asked for presentation based on records and records management, not the broader clerk's office budget.
Okay, just making sure. I mean, I was going to point out that the city clerk has reduced her overall budget by 4.2% in this proposed fiscal year. So thank you for that. With regard to records specifically, Ms. Turney, do these records include records that are related to any of the police department's ongoing functions? Or do they have their own records, keeping system and data collection set?
Thank you for the question, Councilman Reese. This number, all of the records are included in this overall totalization per state law. I am the keeper of all of the records of the city of Reno. So police department records do fall under my purview, and they are scanning into OnBase, and they are utilizing the same system.
And so in that regard, I guess what I want to say is a concern that I have been raising with the chief, and I'll now flag for you. And it has to do with records retention for cold cases. So it's not just the physical evidence, but it's also the records that are related to investigations. And my understanding is that, and I'll just pick a cold case out of my thought process, the Chah murders, which were two children that were abducted and murdered in Reno, you know, almost 30 years ago now. But in any event, those records live somewhere. And I want to make sure that it's not on someone's laptop from 20 years ago or some file folder that a detective is porting around with them. Because somehow we have to either reach back out to those folks and digitize their records. And my understanding in the digitizing of those records is that they then become searchable. There's like artificial intelligence that can look at the handwritten records and pull information out of them and kind of see patterns or names or whatever in a way that is helpful to people looking at cold cases. So is there any of what you're working on that could be, could be or is focused on that?
Thank you for the question. As it relates to digitization of these, the first thing to note is that murder cases have a permanent retention per state law. So any information regarding these cases are never destroyed. And those have traditionally only been kept in hard copy. Those are now slowly being transitioned to the digital platform that we are using for the city and OnBase. That is something that the chief and I have had a lot of conversations and command staff regarding their staffing resources to get this information digitized. A lot of this information is on the microfiche. It's very old, and it is a slow process to convert. To give you an idea, one roll of microfilm with the machine that we have, which is state-of-the-art, takes us anywhere from eight to 12 hours to just scan and digitize the actual film. Then it requires staff to go back in and look at every single film to make sure that it came across correctly. So they are working on getting this information into OnBase, and I'm sure the chief is listening and knows that that will be resource allocation on his end. I can tell you, we do have OCR technology that will read anything that is typed function to be able to identify from a searchability. We do not have capabilities from an AI opportunity, to my knowledge right now, that will read handwritten information. So that will require additional staff to be able to go in and look at that information to keyword and index it. And then if there's platforms out there that are available, that's something that I'm sure the detectives can look into to tie into the existing database.
Okay, I think you've answered my question, but I just want to make sure that I put a fine point on it. If I'm retired Reno Police Detective Ron Drier, and I have a file about a particular cold case, and I'm getting up there in years and perhaps am not spending as much time with it, are we digitizing those kind of records? And are we finding some way to preserve those records for perpetuity?
That is supposed to be happening, to my understanding. And that is something I know that PD is working on a work plan to get the existing murder cases into OnBase so they are accessible to all. And those who have the permissions, I should note, they're locked down based off of supervisory and confidentiality oversight. But it is my understanding, they are digitizing and working on that process of getting more hard copies into the system.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Brekis. Thank you. So thanks for the presentation. You know, I really would, because I think it is something that's been forgotten, see a way to move this faster. And I just want to know, in terms of the funds that are paying for this, you know, the building fund, is it paying for the building, digitization of the building records? The sewer fund, is it paying for digitizing those infrastructure plans, records, and forfeiture that the RPD gets? Are those, is that eligible to work on this effort? I mean, I just, I feel like it's such a momentous undertaking, and we need to accelerate it before, you know, focus goes elsewhere. How are you paying for it all? Is it all general fund, or can we tap into other funds to pay for this?
At this time, the recommendation that's been brought forward to you is solely general fund. I have been working with Director Lochner to try to help and identify additional funds. I, it is my understanding that there's going to be a request coming before BFAC to discuss some building funds for eligibility of this. This is definitely something, if we continue to chip away at the rate in which we are, as I mentioned, this will cover 145 boxes. So digitization would take us a little over 69 years if we were to keep at the rate that we are. And that is noting at this point, there are no hard copies going to storage. That is something that has stopped in the last year during the pandemic, is we are digitizing everything on a go-forward basis. But that is definitely something that has been slow to get to that point. So I know that Debbie and I have discussed looking at other funds, and so we will be in conversations with the directors that help manage those funds to see if there's availability.
That's great, because I mean, particularly the forfeiture ones, I know those have dropped off. But if we've got the backlog in on the PD, you know, maybe that's a priority for those funds. Now, a lot of the requests that we get that sometimes get up to us, you know, I've requested this months ago, that sort of thing. Most of the requests are for new, new records, newly created records, correct?
That is correct. We don't find that there's a lot of historical data being requested. That's part of these old journals, as I mentioned, that UNR is going to be digitizing and then storing in a climate-controlled area for us. In the six-plus years I've been clerk, we've never had a request for them. However, in order to maintain the status of those very much aging records, we wanted to make sure that we get those digitized. Most requests that we get is for information that's been released in the last 10 years or so. The exception to that are planning cases and annexations. Those can go back since inception. And those are, those have not been digitized. So that is the next push.
Sure, sure. So, but how are we, how are we, in this budget or in this function, how are we improving the timeliness of those, of current record requests, the mass volume that we get every year? Are we making any improvements on that?
Part of the request, and what will help with that, is the actual digitization. So part of the process right now is if something isn't digitized, we have to recall it from storage. There's a cost, $20 a box to recall, and then it can take a few days to get here. Staff has to dig through it, and then they have to digitize the record anyway. And if it is a murder case, pointing back to Councilman Reese's previous question, those can be kept across multiple databases in multiple different formats of a record. And it can take months to get that digitized. So the idea is every record that is digitized is a record that is more readily accessible to the public and to staff. So the idea is every record that is digitized is a record that is more readily accessible to the public and to staff. We have one case right now that has come in that has required over 145 boxes to be requested from storage that staff is having to dig through individually. So digital is the way to go. It will be accessible and the public will be able to search many of these records on their own. So that will decrease the amount of time in which public records requests take is the ultimate goal.
That's great. And I'm sure the indexing is so complicated and it needs to be centralized and standardized. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other, I don't see any other hands raised. Thanks so much, Madame Clerk. Great presentation.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. It's not a question. It was just a comment. I just wanted to thank Ashley. I know that this is a challenging and at times tedious job, to your point about staff having to dig through boxes upon boxes of historical records. So we do very much appreciate what you do, you and your team.
Thank you. I very much appreciate that. And that is something that I really would like to commend the city clerk's office. Through the time of the pandemic, they actually have really leveraged this opportunity. Something that was obviously a disaster that we had not expected. And my team has done an incredible job of indexing and physically going through thousands and thousands of boxes during the pandemic to make sure that records are digitized and available to the public. And I could not do it without them. So they are to be commended. So thank you for noting that.
Great. And Madame Clerk, just the fact that the presentation, I really appreciate this presentation for us getting all this information. And again, your, your department really has done a great job. So, thank you. Mr. Manager?
Rebecca Venus. Our final presentation, last but certainly not least, is from Director Venus. She's going to be talking about the CRM that we're proposing in this next fiscal year's budget. And I think that sort of in the same line of the questions just asked of the clerk, how will this affect the public? I think you'll all be excited about what you're about to hear from Ms. Venus.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor Shivi, Vice Mayor Weber and Reno City Council members and Manager Thornley. I'm Rebecca Venus, Director of Neighborhood Services. And I'm here today to give you a quick update on information regarding the requests that we have put in for a new CRM system for neighborhood services. So I'm going to do a quick screen share and hopefully this goes flawlessly. Can you guys see the slideshow there? Perfect. So I'm going to kind of jump really quickly into this. I'd like to start just giving a little bit of a background in terms of definitions or language you may hear during this presentation. First and foremost, you might hear me intermittently combine customers versus citizens. Typically a customer is someone who buys a good or service from you. I consider our residents who are taxpayers paying for our services to also be customers. So I may intermittently use those two terms as we go through this presentation. In addition to that, there is a lot of use of the term CRM that is used both in marketing as well as in customer service. And so I wanted to provide a little bit of clarity today on what we're talking about. There is a customer request management system and that is what is currently in use by Reno Direct. But then there is a customer relationship management system. A request management system is a workflow, like a 3-1-1 system. It manages a request that comes in. It is based on the request as the primary piece and it filters through a system. A customer relationship management system is really much more robust. And it is based on providing both the facilitation of the request, but it also allows for two-way conversation. It allows you to do some push notifications. It is also, it's customer-based. So instead of us facilitating through the system on the request, we would facilitate through the system based on the citizen. It also allows us to do a little bit more data-driven and, and strategy planning from that perspective. So a current situation, just to give you a quick background, we currently utilize Q Alert for our customer request management. That's what we're using for Reno Direct. The system was purchased in 2008. To just kind of reference out into the 2008 when the system was put into place, social media was not utilized on smartphones just yet. We were still going on doing things on a desktop and we were looking at everything historically. In today's world, we are now, everything is based on a smartphone. In fact, I'm watching our council meeting on the smartphone here and requests are now real-time. So when we start talking about the expectations of our customers and the things that they're looking at, in today's worlds, our customers expect to be able to get immediate response. They actually expect to be looking into the future and they expect to be able to do so from their private phones, their, their smartphones versus needing to do that on a desktop. In addition to that, the shortages that we've seen in the system over the year, we have added in some additional serviceability to it. So we've added in Clickdesk, which gave us an ability to do a chat function with residents that runs separate from our current system. They're not integrated. So we do have to save chats in a little bit different module. And then we utilize Asella, which is also a request management system. And that is what's used for building and permitting, business licensing and code enforcement. The Asella platform for workflow management does not speak to the Q Alert platform. So anytime we receive a request from a customer that is based in one of those categories, we have to manually input it into one system, then manually input it again into another system. And then when the workflow is tracked and completed, we have to manually bring it back. So it actually creates three touchpoints on a project because the two systems don't integrate. In terms of customer relationship management, at this point in time, we only use Constant Contact as an email blast system. So we do not have a relationship management system in the traditional sense in that we are tracking residents and information and history about them so that we're able to target messaging to them on the things they care about in the platforms they care about most. At this point in time, we don't have a system that does that. To kind of give you a comparison between the system we have today and the system we're proposing, our current system is single-stream workflow. That means that when a request comes in, it can only be facilitated to one department at a time. So if we have an issue that requires both planning and public works, we either have to only allow them to touch it one at a time or we have to create two separate service requests, which makes it a little difficult for us to provide the quality customer service we need to. In a new relationship management system, multiple people could actually collaborate on a request at any given time. The other issue I mentioned previously, the system integration across with Asella. Right now, we have to manually take that data and re-enter it into Asella. It also creates a delay in response to residents because if a resident calls Reno Direct for an update on a code case or a business licensing issue, they have to then call the actual code officer because the platforms don't integrate directly across. Whereas if we were able to get a system that had an API that would allow us to integrate with Asella, we would be able to instantly be able to provide those updates. The current system does not really allow for data monitoring and reporting. Any type of reporting we do requires customized programming to come from the IT department. And so we're not able to easily track responses, look at them from a geographical standpoint or, or create any kind of dashboard system. So being able to have a new system would allow us to quickly query things. You know, we could come in and draw a geographic area and say, what is the number one call for service in this particular area? Or things of that nature. Currently, a request management system, I think I said this earlier, it's based on the request. So when a customer calls to complain about an abandoned vehicle, we put it in for the request. If that same customer calls us back two days later with a different issue, it becomes a new request, but we're not tracking that it's the same customer. So we're not able to come in and see that customer, John Smith, has these six issues. We're only able to come in and see that the individual service request. So when we look at a relationship management system, that becomes more about the customer or the resident. That becomes a system where a resident logs in, they're able to give us a concern about an abandoned vehicle. They're also able to give us a concern about, say graffiti. And when we come back to talk to that customer in the future, we can see the types of issues and concerns that they've had in the past. It also allows us honestly to then target customers based on issues and concerns they've had in the past. So if we have residents who have concerns about graffiti and we're going to hear a new code at a council meeting about graffiti, we can come in, query all of those residents who have had graffiti concerns and then push message to them, information about this upcoming code item on a council meeting agenda. The system we have now only allows you, from a self-service perspective, it only allows you to put the service request in. It does not allow you to come back and monitor it, check progress, see how things are going. Right now, if you were to look at a relationship management tool that is customer-based, a customer could log in and quite transparently look at every service request they have and get updates on those requests. Right now, what's happening is if a, if a resident has a request and they can't get an update through the system, sometimes they elevate to you guys, you're coming to me. I'm then going to, you know, the code enforcement officer, whoever. So it's adding additional work as we attempt to get that answer. If we had a system that was integrated across and self-service, that would allow residents to do that at their time and see the. The other challenge we run into is our residents. Reno Direct is a Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 operation. Many of our residents don't have the time to contact us Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. So a more robust self-service tool would allow them to do after-hours submission of concerns or after-hours research on their concerns and just allow for us to have much more accessibility to our service requests. Again, I had mentioned no two-way communications. Through the current system, we are not able to, to communicate to our residents proactively. A relationship management system would give us an ability to do text messaging. It could give us an ability to do targeted email messaging and automate things based on citizen requests, based on geographic location or any of the other data that gets collected in that system. And then the most important piece to this, of course, is being built in 2008. Q Alert is built on a legacy code, which means it's no longer in use and makes it vulnerable to potential cyber attacks. The new relationship management tools that we are looking at are built on newer, newer platforms that give us enhanced cybersecurity. So the benefits to us putting a new system into place, it's like, how does that translate out to the resident? And how does that translate out to you as council? The first and foremost is it will increase our communications and our engagement with our citizens. It's going to allow us to more proactively do outreach. One of the examples I think of right off the top of my mind, and, and we heard this from councils, we first started the budget discussion is, you know, as we have agenda items coming on council meetings, how can we better communicate with residents what those items are? Well, the key to us being able to do that is understanding what the residents care about and understanding the platforms they want to receive their information on. And that's really what this is going to allow us to do. This is going to allow us to target residents who have had specific concerns and let them know that these topics are coming up at our council meeting while also allowing them a simple push button to provide public comment without even needing to come in and attend the council meetings with us. It will improve the customer service experience internally and externally by making it much easier for them to track down where their service requests are. It will change how we communicate with them because we will no longer look at them as SR13346. We will look at them as Resident John Smith, who has these types of concerns, lives in Ward 2 and has this type of history with the city of Reno. We, it personalizes them. It makes them more personable. It does give us increased transparency on the request. If a citizen can log into a system and at any given time, check where it is in the process, it simplifies that transparency for them. The biggest piece for our team is going to be the reduced impact to staff time, not having to enter requests multiple times, not having to create multiple service requests because we can't filter them out to multiple departments. These are all things that are going to reduce staff times as we look at responding to citizen requests and allowing us to spend that time in other places actually solving the problems. It also will give us the ability to do data-driven strategies. If you look at, you know, if we were searching it by customer, an example of that might be, we could go in and see that we have a certain, you know, number of addresses in the city of Reno where we have weed complaints every year. This would allow us on the front end to maybe do outreach or communication to those addresses to let them know the season's coming in, here's the ordinance that the city of Reno has, just a reminder. But the proactive side of that is we could reduce the code calls on the back end of that by having, you know, if we're able to prevent the situations upfront with communication proactively, we can prevent our teams having to come out and do that extra work. And then of course, the biggest thing I had mentioned previously with the legacy platform is it increases the, the security of our citizen data and request information. And with that, I will see if anyone has questions.
Thank you. I don't see any hand.
I have a hand.
Yes, okay. Let's go to Councilwoman Breckus first. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. Did you say if you, did you go see another city that has this system? This vending product, this product by this vendor?
So we, we have not specifically identified the vendor at this point in time. The pricing that we put in there is based on the Salesforce platform. We, at this point in time, that's the only platform that we know can integrate through Asella. It's got the API to do so. It is utilized in Denver. They utilize the Salesforce platform for their facilitation of workflow. And the reason this one came top of mind to us is during the pandemic, we saw the local health district in the state, they utilize Asella for tracking of COVID testing. And they use Salesforce for tracking of immunizations. And so they've been able to integrate those two systems together quickly. And so we've been able to see how that integration works. And that's why at this point in time, the pricing is based on the Salesforce platform. However, we will go out and do a formal RFQ for this service before officially putting those funds forward.
Oh, that's good. I really do think, even before you put the RFP, go visit a community with some people and look to see how they integrated in. I did that many, many years ago on like the first version of TideMark or Asella before it was TideMark and, and bringing on. Cause there's other things that come through, like yours, you know, I like the idea of the customer base where you see the customer. But what if, for example, people want to report anonymity? What if people want to report, you know, they don't live here, they're, you know, they work here? And then, you know, there's training protocols and, and, and I'm, one, one issue I heard was, well, you can log on and see where the status is. Well, if, if, if half the people have been trained to just say in status and their notes are inconsistent, they don't have the binder that tells them how to put the notes, you know. I think there's a lot of stuff in terms of how you, beyond just the, the system, how you set up the book, the, the training manual or the manual of operations in-house. And you, you learn a lot, I think, when you see someone really having it in an applied sense where they've worked on it. So I think it sounds good and exciting to take it to that next level. And the thought being customer-based, but not necessarily tracking our citizens in a way that might raise privacy concerns too. But I think, you know, you can get there and learn from others who are using this. So great. Look forward to, you know, seeing it progress.
Thank you so much. Next up will be Councilwoman Jordan.
I think Councilwoman Doer has her physical hand up because she can't put her yellow hand up. Is that correct?
Yeah. Okay.
She was, she had her hand up. No worries.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Doer.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for that. First of all, kudos for going in this direction. CRM, customer relation management systems have been around for like at least two decades. And it's astonishing to me frankly, that Asella doesn't have a built-in component that would already integrate with Asella. I mean, you have all the data. Why would they not have a front-end query tracking? I, I, it's astonishing. And in the past, when they haven't, we've built that in-house. And I'm glad that you are looking at, you know, what would work out there that would connect. Because this, you have hit it on the head. You know, one of the biggest challenges with Reno Direct that I often hear is that they get sent something back saying, your issue has been resolved. But the customer does not know how their issue has been resolved. Whether it's been resolved because A, we hear you, but we don't have any money to deal with that today. That wasn't in our this year's budget. B, you know, we measured the distance and it doesn't justify a stop sign or a red curb or whatever. They, they just don't hear it. And so in accordance, in a, sorry, in connection with this, what I'm hoping is that the staff can also be trained to be a little bit more thorough, understanding what residents are looking for, right? To, to understand, because when they hear it's been resolved, what they usually do is alve that to us, right? As council members. Well, he says it's been resolved. Nothing's changed, you know, and so I'm still upset. The other question I have for you is, is really a question. So for my entire time on the council, I've talked about the fact that our police station, our different entry of information does not talk to the database that the police, that the police use. And so there has been this hand entry process. And so there has been this hand entry process. They, when I first got on council, they were some four, five thousand reports behind in transferring the reporting over into the database management system. And I'm just wondering, while you're doing this, they've hired separate programmers to do front-ends, back-ends, data retrieval. And that's been going on for the whole time I've been on council, almost seven years. But I guess I'm just wondering if it's time to tie these things together. You know, tie them up in a bow. You're looking at it. While you're doing that, is there a system that can connect the reporting with the data tracking for the police office too? And I know your world is not IT, but you are, your world is customers. And those are the people who are reporting this stuff to the police too, you know, and who report these challenges. So it would be great, as you move along, to give us an update on both systems. You know, and maybe the police are like, we're on a different mission, we're in a different schedule, we're looking at different software. But I guess that's a point to Mr. Manager. You know, is, are these systems could solve both problems? Maybe that's worth talking about, you know. So anyway. Any response? I don't want to speak anymore.
No, I just was gonna say the first, in terms of the customer service, I'm really glad actually that you brought that up. Because City Manager Thornley, one of the focuses he has us working on, on the back end, honestly is creating quality service standards. And a component of that is going to be how we respond to our residents, even if it is responding to a service request. Because staff uses a lot of lingo. And I'm just thinking through an abandoned vehicle request, right? Where an abandoned vehicle is not there, so the parking enforcement officer goes, oh, it's GOA, which they know has gone on arrival, but the resident does not understand. So our team right now is manually coming in and typing that result, that response. What we need to do adjacent to putting a new system in is a customer service, a quality service standard. They get set up through the city and training so that our team understands that when you are putting in the update on the service request, that you're explaining, we went out to inspect the location of the vehicle, the vehicle was no longer in the location. Please contact Reno Direct if the vehicle returns, right? Something to allow someone to know what's next.
And then it would be good to have those, and maybe they already do, those iPads or whatever that are in the vehicle that they can update on-site. So they don't have to do these two-step function of going back to the office, transferring their notes into the CRM. They should be able to upload what's happening, just like the police can, just like, you know, UPS delivery can. I mean, lots of people are entering stuff at their vehicle, right? And I don't really know how we work it, but it seems like it would really help facilitate the timely response back to our residents. I'll leave it there for the moment, I'm sure other people have stuff to say.
Well, I was just gonna, on the police piece, we have, we are looking at it having hopefully one of two options. So we had Officer Blount, the PIO from police, has been joining us on some of the demonstrations that we've been viewing because there are platforms that serve both services. But then we are also looking at whatever platform we choose should have an API that integrates into the Reno Police Department's app where you can pull data by zip code and you can pull crime history. Because really, the win would be for a resident to be able to look at not only service request data or the dashboard to show not just service requests, but calls for service to RPD and potentially calls for service to fire. To be able to get a complete picture of everything that's occurring in a neighborhood, not just one service area out of the city of Reno. So that is, one of our hopes is that it's either got to integrate with the app that currently exists for police or we're involving them in these conversations to try to create that same transparency.
Okay, and when I come back on my second round, I just want to ask about code enforcement more generally. So I'll let someone else.
Perfect. Thank you. Councilwoman Jordan.
Thank you very much, and this is really exciting. I know this is something we've talked at length about closing the loop, for lack of a better term. Like you say, oftentimes the request, they'll get a confirmation of a submitted level of request. And then sometimes it's crickets and until they get a, hey, the case is closed, to Councilwoman Doer's comments and they don't know any sort of resolution that occurred there. I think it is, as you evolve, you know, this platform and maybe the details within it, is kind of even the AI involvement of informing the person who submitted it as to its status. You know, it has gone from Reno Direct and is being sent to, you know, code enforcement, even an approximation of a response, at least then people kind of understand. And then the triggers when that time comes that, you know, additional time is needed, blah, blah, blah. And then even if it's a resolution in which we know they may not like the answer, as Councilwoman Doer pointed out, providing them the data as to why, you know, you can't put a speed bump in on a primary access road. I mean, I think we get so many of those. But then, you know, sometimes when you get a no even, let's say it's a, well, it code allows for ABC. That's always good to give the why something can't be accomplished in the way in which they've requested. But I've had people say, well, how do I go about changing an ordinance? You know, something that kind of gives a next step of a, well, what if I want to change the actual framework of a something? Because I've had to do some digging when people have asked that to kind of go, you know what? What is the kind of the way in which to launch those things? So I think just continual sort of updates. And of course, the release that we can communicate with them via text, I think is really good. That's how most people are getting their information these days. But I'm excited, this closing the loop and giving triggers along the way has been something we've all been striving for. So good job on this, this will improve our customer service. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't, I know that it looks like Councilmember Doer might have answered a call. And I think she was the only one that had, does anyone else have anything? I don't see any other hands. So I think we will say thank you to you. And hopefully she can, I think we're done with the meeting, so, or will be. So maybe she can contact you later. So, thanks so much. Great stuff. Really excited about it, about what you're looking at. Better for all of our our customers.
And I appreciate also Councilmember Brekis's recommendation because we, as we look at how we map things out, it is going to be important for us to see what's worked in other communities and where they've had challenges. Because we, one of the things we talked about with the ones we've demoed is we need to have an ability to have a anonymous submission. Because sometimes we know when dealing with code cases and other situations, the complainant doesn't want to be recognized, right? They have concerns about that. So I think that those are insights that help us tremendously and I appreciate that feedback and suggestion because that'll be good for our team.
That's great. And there is Councilmember Doer, so would you like to do your next round?
Sure, I just, let me just, I just wondered, since you didn't really address it, you're very focused on the specific thing. I just wondered, what is the future code enforcement? You know, what are, what are, are we talking about? Keeping it as is, restructuring it, adding people? I mean, here's an example, we're working on a tree ordinance. And often, and we should have that done, you know, within six months. You know, approximately. And often, the code enforcement folks aren't trained in tree stuff, right? And so they'll go, maybe the tree's gone, and they go, yep, the tree was cut down or something. They don't really know what the rules are of the game. And I just wondered what you guys are thinking. I could give you dozens of examples, but I know you have generalists that are code enforcement. And then some of them, like a stormwater system requires maybe an engineer to do code enforcement to compare to the ASB build. Or, you know, the tree needs to pull the tree preservation plan. Or, you know, maybe someone's complaining about compliance with a permit condition that's more technical. Not just was a fence there, let's say, but is it the right type of fence that was specked out in the PUD? Or a horse condition or something? So what do you think? Could you just give us a couple minutes on that?
What I can do is I'll give you a quick update on kind of structurally where we live today. And then I'll defer to Councilmember, or no, sorry, City Manager Thornley on kind of the future of where it could go. But where we sit today is we really do try to, they're physically divided. So our code enforcement officers are divided by physical locations. But we have specialists within that. So we have CEO Lozado, who currently oversees our motel inspection program. And because he's doing those inspections, he manages all of those. We have a secondary CEO that assists with it, but that's really his primary. But within each of those teams, we're divided north and south. They also have specialists that deal with particular projects. And a lot of that usually is based on a code officer one versus a code officer two. A code officer two usually handles those more complicated. And then when talking to what you're discussing, the really complicated, because we have standardized, we have a weed complaint.
Well, there's code, but then there's permit conditions that are unique to a lot of different sites.
Yep, or we have stuff that gets just really complicated, right? It was something that was, you know, agreed upon in a PUD and now we're dealing with a tenure, whatever that may be. And that's where we have our senior code enforcement officer. We are currently working on filling that position. We have, we're down to our finalists for that position now. It was previously held by CEO Joe Henry. And we are currently looking to have that replaced here in the next couple of weeks. And that very specifically is for that reason. So you have kind of this more expert across multiple lines to help with the more complicated. Then we have the Assistant Director of Neighborhood Services, Alex Woodley, who unfortunately, due to our shortage in code, has really spent a lot of time filling in on Joe Henry's old positions. Going forward though, he would then be the person, as you talk about code and things related to how do we change an ordinance? Or how do we look at, what's a smarter way for us to handle this situation going forward? That will really fall into his realm once we're fully staffed on the code side of things. And with that, I'll turn it over and see if the city manager would like to add in for the future.
You, I think that's a great overview of where we stand today in neighborhood services. I've been having sort of an ongoing discussion with Director Venus and Assistant Director Woodley on whether or not the concept of neighborhood services as a department is in fact working for us as an organization. One of the things that we're focused on is improving our communications and our customer service. And that is difficult to do, I think, when we are so focused. It's so energy-intensive in terms of code enforcement as well. And so I think it makes some sense probably to split that department up and we'll have a department of compliance and we'll revert to the OCCE model. The exact specifics of that are something that Director Venus and Assistant Director Woodley and I are working on, I believe, later this week.
You know, a lot of times, and maybe it was this way before, first of all, thank you for that answer. A lot of times, code enforcement, at least in regulatory agencies I've worked in, is embedded with the agency that does your licensing, your permitting. And because, you know, you're part of a team, there's the front end of issuing the permit or the business license or whatever. And then there's the back end of ensuring compliance with that thing. And so often, even if it makes a larger department, it might make some kind of sense, you know, to put them together. In my thought view, you know, my perspective, but, you know, however you want to structure it. But I just wondered where we were going with this.
We're going, I think that your observation is correct. A lot of organizations do group those functions together. That said, I also think that there's a quality control aspect of having it separated a little bit from the issuing side of the house. That way, we get those spot checks on whether or not it was issued properly and we're not reporting that all through the same person.
And as long as they can call on people, like whether it's trees and forestry or whether it's, you know, stormwater over to engineering or, you know, just get some higher level of staff in there to assist with untangling some of the technical issues. I think that'd be a good quality add. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Brekis.
Yeah, so Ms. Doer brought up a good point. We've been at budget since March and we've been looking at departments and functions. And I think it's been good. I think it's been good with the new manager to do deep dive on things like the records management. But, you know, questions keep coming up about the org chart. And I just feel that, you know, when we adopt the budget, we adopt the budget with the departments as the organization is formulated with the complement. You know, say code enforcement, you got your senior, you got your code officers, then you have maybe some admin. And that's set, when we close out the budget, that's how it is. And anything that transitions around, moves, you know, the code officer for stormwater over to public works, that's a budget augmentation, you know, because money's moved from one area to another. But somehow between moving the money over through an augmentation, it's also an organizational change to the budget. And that, in my view, once the budget's closed out, needs to come to the council for that approval, you know, through that augmentation position. Sometimes we get spreadsheets when we're moving money around in the budget, but we don't really get what happened to the people and the organization. And I think they're, they can't be separated. And that's why often I've had some challenges with some budget augmentations that don't really tell the story. And I think, you know, the manager has a lot, has, you know, tremendous amounts of authority to, as the chief executive, to film, put the organization how he wants that to go. But that's also parcel with our budgeting responsibility and there's a little bit of overlap. So I think any, you know, reorg, when we close it out, any reorg does, in my view, come back to us. I mean, it has to, and I understand there's even implications to purrs on how all of that, you know, rates out. And so the more we can get closed out during, before we do it in May, the less work we have to do as the year goes forward. And it's kind of a runoff of last, yesterday's conversation where now that we have the guidance perhaps on the, on the CARES money, we can roll some of that in and close out as much as we want. But if he's not going to be ready to close out the reformation of neighborhood services until August, in my view, when that augmentation comes, he needs to show us the org chart and show how the chess pieces were moved around. Because, you know, our budgeting authority has to be, you know, run continuous with the budget year unless we do otherwise. And sometimes the cross purposes don't work out very well in my experience. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't see any other hands raised. I just want to say thank you so much.
Councilmember Doer has her hand up.
Okay, sorry, I didn't.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just, I just wanted to just say one thing about what Councilwoman Brekis said, which is even if for no other reason, I mean, we, we're the policymakers of this organization and people look to us to understand the organization, to help interpret the organization for them. And sometimes if the pieces shift, which there's nothing wrong with that, it's just keeping us in the loop, you know? Making sure we know, oh, code enforcement is no longer with neighborhood services and it's also not with community development, it's its own thing. I mean, just making sure that we are not maybe the last to know, but we're in the loop as these changes occur is very helpful to us doing our job. You know, one of the things we do is we educate and we educate our residents about the city. You know, how it functions, how to get help, where to call. You know, those kind of things. Not just call Reno Direct, you know, for everything, but to be a little more strategic or understand. But even, it's just really for us, you know, to make sure we are following the bouncing ball and we understand, you know, your thought process, I guess. Thank you.
That's great. Good comment. Okay, thank you. Mr. Thornley, do you have any other comments? Before we go to the clerk for public comment?
I do not. I appreciate everybody's engagement and patience in this process. Director Lockner will probably fill in a couple more blanks tomorrow during our regularly scheduled meeting and we'll be ready to go on the 19th.
Great. Okay, then we'll go to, anyone else have any, any other comments? Okay, then we'll go back to Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. For closing public comment, it should be noted, public comment for this section is reserved for items received after 4:00 PM, the business day preceding our meeting. Should be noted, we have received no public comment and I will be turning it back to council for your favorite motion of the day.
Who do adjourn?
Motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
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 We're adjourned.
See you tomorrow. Thank you.